Buenas tardes, a todos. Buenas tardes, ¿cómo están todos? Suena bien. ¿Están disfrutando de Nila este año? Excelente. ¿Están disfrutando del campus UCSD? Muy destacado. ¿Quiénes han pasado el día entero en Black's Beach? Alguien. Está bien, eso es bueno. Es una playa de Nuitas, así que no... No vayan allí. Estamos listos para poner la presentación. Bien. Bien, bien. Bienvenidos, a todos. Bienvenidos a Nila 2014. Para aquellos que no saben, este es nuestro aniversario cuarenta años como organización. Feliz cumpleaños, cuarenta años para Ship. Así que hemos estado tomando un mirada muy cerca de cómo Ship se organiza, cómo estamos alineados para lograr nuestra visión. Y hemos llegado a algunas conclusiones como organización. Y lo que nos gustaría hacer es compartir un poco sobre nuestro viaje y algunas decisiones importantes que necesitarán su ayuda esta noche. Así que primero me gustaría presentar al ex presidente y vicepresidente de Ship, Diana Gomez.
¿Cómo están ustedes? ¿Seguraron que se escannaron? ¿Se sienten como alimento de comida todavía? Bien. ¿Pueden verme?
No, solo pueden ver el espíritu.
Bien. ¿Pero están los demás escuchándonos? ¿Había mencionado eso? Bien. Bien, a todos los que están por ahí en el mundo, bienvenidos. Bien, así que lo que voy a hacer es hablar un poco sobre la historia. Porque la historia es importante y siempre tenemos que asegurarnos de que entendamos dónde estamos, cómo llegamos aquí y cómo vamos a avanzar. Así que voy a hablar de dónde estábamos y cómo llegamos aquí, y luego otros hablarán de cómo vamos a avanzar. Así que siempre es importante. No queremos adormecer en la historia, pero definitivamente queremos asegurarnos de que aprendamos de lo pasado. Así que un poco de historia. Barry mencionó que tenemos 40 años, y estamos muy orgullosos de eso. Pero dos años después de eso, creamos otra organización, que era Ship Foundation. Y sé que en algunos casos, muchos miembros no saben realmente que hay, en cierto sentido, dos organizaciones: la fundación y Ship Inc. Porque ustedes como miembros siempre están tratando el lado de Ship Inc. Pero hay dos organizaciones, y la forma en que miramos esto, la responsabilidad de Ship Inc. es ustedes los miembros asegurarse de que estamos constantemente desarrollando la membresía y creciendo la membresía. Ship Foundation es una fundación creada para recaudar fondos de otras fundaciones, desarrollar préstamos y crear programas educativos que ustedes, los miembros, podrían aprovechar. Y en este esfuerzo continuo de tratar de alinear las dos organizaciones, en 2011, por primera vez, ambas organizaciones se acordaron de una misión, una visión y un plan estratégico. Y así tienes que entender que hay dos consejos de directores. Y así fue... Ustedes probablemente están pensando, "Bueno, eso es una cuestión de cabeza", pero nos tomó mucho esfuerzo para que los dos consejos se unieran y se acordaran de una estrategia, una misión y una visión. Y lo otro que hicimos fue establecer un comité de gestión que permitiría a las dos organizaciones trabajar juntos y asegurarnos de que en cierto sentido estuvimos sirviendo el propósito de los demás. Así que, por ejemplo, no queríamos que la fundación comenzara a recaudar fondos o desarrollar préstamos para salvar wales, porque tendrían esa capacidad. Así que queríamos asegurarnos de que vinculáramos las dos organizaciones juntas, y fue a través de este comité de gestión. Todas grandes ideas. Pero hoy, Ship es... Así que hablemos un poco de nuestras fortalezas. Y somos la mayor organización latino-técnica, definitivamente. Así que deberíamos daros un aplauso a todos. Espero que aquellos que están escuchando y por ahí están aplaudiendo también. Pero ¿por qué somos conocidos? Definitivamente somos conocidos por esta fuerte marca. Somos conocidos por proporcionar talento hispano superior a América corporativa y al gobierno. Definitivamente somos pasiones de miembros y líderes. Tenemos mucha pasión. Y vemos eso todo el tiempo en las conferencias. Somos fuertes y impulsados, y tenemos una gran base de estudiantes. Tenemos la capacidad de impactar antes de la universidad, y tenemos una declaración de misión muy impactante. Cada vez que cambias la vida de alguien para el mejor, sabemos que estamos haciendo una gran diferencia. Pero hemos luchado en varios de los siguiendo áreas. Si miras nuestra comunidad hispana, es decir, estamos, ya sabes, disparando hacia el cielo. Continuamos creciendo. No hay señales de la población hispana o de la población latina paralizada. Pero si miras nuestra organización y comparas las dos, en cierto sentido estamos en línea. Y sí, tenemos este incremento de crecimiento, pero cuando te retrocedes y miras, estamos literalmente en línea. Y nuestra comunidad sigue disparando hacia el cielo. Así que luchamos en esa área. La propuesta de valor no responde a muchos de nuestros objetivos. Y es muy difícil optimizar nuestro ingreso y nuestro financiación cuando estás tratando de apoyar dos organizaciones. Ya sabes, dos grupos de personal, dos consejos de consejo, dos grupos de políticas, dos grupos de todo. Terminamos con controles financieros inestables. Y es muy complicado en términos de transacciones de una organización a otra, cuando una empresa le da a otra, pero espera servicios de otra. Así que es realmente difícil. Tenemos ejecución inconsistente de programas y eventos clave. Y sé que en algunos casos han sentido algunos de esos, específicamente para los profesionales, donde te preguntas, "Hey, nadie me ha devuelto la llamada". Así que esas son algunas de las cosas. De nuevo, ¿cómo podemos arreglar eso? Una pequeña presencia o influencia en D.C. en la política pública. Así que hay mucha política que se está desarrollando. Bueno, tal vez no ahora mismo porque el Congreso está estancado. Pero hay mucho sucediendo alrededor de nosotros y acerca de nosotros, pero no influenciamos eso. Así que eso es otra cosa con la que tenemos este desafío. Pero, ya sabes, como parte de... Así que para que una organización continúe siendo exitosa, cualquier empresa te dirá que, ya sabes, para que seas exitoso tienes que continuar haciendo decisiones importantes, tienes que cambiar con todo lo que te rodea. Y si miras a América corporativa, hay empresas que no hicieron eso y ya no están en el negocio. Así que, por ejemplo, como Xerox o Kodak. Bueno, Kodak todavía está ahí, pero, ya sabes, Kodak todavía estaba tratando de vender cine durante el tiempo más largo. Pero así que en nuestro caso, hemos hecho algunas de esas decisiones importantes y hemos tenido resultados positivos. En 2007, cuando fui el presidente nacional, esto fue un movimiento muy grande. Y ustedes ni siquiera recuerdan que nuestra conferencia... Bueno, algunos de los miembros mayores lo recuerdan. Bien. Está bien, toma el paso. Así que nuestra conferencia solía estar en enero y febrero cuando era muy frío. Bien. Y así fue... Pero cuando llegaron el enero y el febrero, no había más empleos para nuestros miembros. Porque las empresas cambiaron sus ciclos de reclutamiento para el otoño. Así que cuando venían a nuestra conferencia, solo venían por apariencia, y realmente no tenían nada que ofrecer. Así que ese fue uno de los cambios por los que impulsamos la conferencia desde el verano hasta el otoño para beneficiar a esos individuos, nuestros miembros, que venían a la conferencia. Y hemos visto desde que hicimos eso... Ahora, eso fue una decisión muy, muy difícil. Porque el cambio es difícil, ¿de acuerdo? Y, ya sabes, a la gente no le gusta cambiar. Y así fue realmente difícil. Puede que pienses, "Bueno, eso suena como una cuestión de cabeza". Pero somos personas pasiones y queremos que las cosas permanezcan exactamente lo mismo. Así que fue una decisión muy difícil, y mucha gente jugó un papel en hacer que esto suceda. Estudiantes, nuestros miembros profesionales, América corporativa, y realmente abrazando este movimiento importante. ¿Y qué nos hizo? Casi doblamos en financiación. Doblamos en la cantidad de empresas que venían a la conferencia. Nuestra membresía aumentó rápidamente, todo porque hicimos este movimiento muy grande. Un movimiento muy difícil y controversial, pero tuvo que suceder. En 2009, también fuimos una organización impulsada por voluntarios. Así que cuando fui el presidente nacional, fui el CEO de la empresa. Así que tuve que dirigir Ship y hacer mi trabajo al mismo tiempo. Así que no, ya sabes, y nuestra organización estaba creciendo muy rápido. Es decir, explotamos un 150%. Así que, por supuesto, no podemos tener un CEO partidario que tenga que preocuparse por su trabajo, el que realmente les paga. Así que hicimos este movimiento en la formación de una organización que sería dirigida por el personal, y ahí es cuando creamos al CEO. ¿Y qué nos hizo? De nuevo, traía estabilidad a los programas al transferirlos al personal. Fue posible entregar a esos clientes que nos seguían preguntando, "Ya sabes, estás cometiendo muchas errores", pero nos permitió ser un poco más consistentes y eficientes. Y, por supuesto, en 2011, el alineamiento de Ship Inc. con Ship Foundation. Así que estas fueron decisiones importantes, decisiones difíciles, pero al final nuestra organización continuó creciendo, continuó moviéndose y nos permitió continuar existiendo. Así que con eso, Barry va a hablar contigo sobre... Bueno, otros también van a hablar contigo sobre lo que vas a pedirte que apoyes en esta... en otra decisión importante. Bien, así que Barry.
¿Se sienten en la buildup aquí? Anticipación. ¿Hay alguna manera de mover esta pequeña caja aquí? Oh, oh, podría leer. El poder de leer. Bien, excelente. Bien, así que esa pequeña historia, así es como llegamos a donde estamos hoy. Así que estamos proponiendo un gran cambio. Lo que estamos proponiendo es que Ship Inc. y Ship Foundation se fusionen y formen una 501(c)(3), una organización sin fines de lucro. Strongemente creemos que esto permitirá mejores procesos financieros y control. Nos permite tener un único consejo de directores con una mejor estructura de gestión para nuestro personal. Seremos capaces de incorporar más miembros influyentes a nuestros consejos de directores, y esas personas pueden traer poder e influencia, y, por supuesto, dinero para ayudar a apoyar la misión de Ship. Creemos que una 501(c)(3) es mucho más deseable para muchos de nuestros patrocinadores, y vamos a expandir un poco sobre eso. Y nos permitirá tener más alineamiento de marca entre Ship Inc. y Ship Foundation, y nos permitirá hablar con una voz. Así que, ¿por qué queremos ir a una 501(c)(3)? Bueno, hay muchas razones logísticas, pero algunos de los beneficios y las razones por las que las 501(c)(3) son preferidas se centran en su deductibilidad de impuestos. Cuando las organizaciones donan directamente a Ship Inc., eso no es deductible de impuestos porque Ship Inc. es una 501(c)(6). Así que lo que hemos estado haciendo durante los años es poner dinero directamente en Ship Inc., pero algunas organizaciones solo pueden donar a las 501(c)(3). Así que eso crea esta situación muy complicada donde tenemos que alinear donaciones que vienen a la fundación de Ship a programas que están siendo ejecutados por Ship Inc. Puedes ver cuán complicado puede llegar esto a través de los años. Hemos hecho nuestro mejor para controlarlo, pero aún ha hecho que nuestros auditorios, nuestros declaraciones financieras sean muy complicadas. Así que permitir a todas las empresas donar directamente a la fundación de Ship, o, perdón, la nueva 501(c)(3) que estamos formando, nos permitirá que esa deductibilidad de impuestos vaya a cualquiera, y limpiará ese asunto que hemos creado a través de los años. Seremos capaces de crear un proceso más eficiente para aquellos capítulos que quieren recibir donaciones directamente a sus capítulos. Seremos capaces de hacerlo mucho más fácil con una organización porque esos capítulos serían subconjuntos de la organización padre, Ship. También tendríamos el potencial de permitir que los miembros donen directamente a Ship y obtengan crédito de deductibilidad de impuestos, ¿verdad? Así que la forma en que SUI hace esto con sus membresías de vida, esas membresías son en regreso, son honorarios en regreso por donación a SUI. Así que si donas 1,400 dólares a SUI, obtienes una membresía de vida y obtienes 400 dólares de regreso en tus impuestos. Así que es un precio bastante bueno. No estoy diciendo que vamos a hacer exactamente eso. Ya está, aumentar el porcentaje de membresía de vida a 1,000 dólares. Así que, pero te estoy dando un ejemplo de cómo los miembros en el futuro, esos muy influyentes miembros que han llegado a donde están debido a Ship, podrían volver y donar directamente a Ship, directamente a los capítulos en los que creen y obtener esa deductibilidad de impuestos. Y a través de los años, especialmente en los últimos tres años, las 501(c)(6) y cualquier cosa menos las 501(c)(3) realmente han recibido mucho escrutinio por la IRS. Y así ser una 501(c)(6) ha sido bajo, supongo, bajo el microscopio de la IRS, mientras que ser una 501(c)(3) y tener un alineamiento alrededor de una misión de educación no lo es. Así que lo que realmente quieres saber es, ¿qué se vería este consejo? Así que pasamos mucho tiempo y hicimos muchos compromisos para crear un consejo de directores futuro que represente los intereses de los interesados de la fundación y los interesados de la shipping. Lo que ves aquí es un consejo de directores de 15 miembros. El azul se pretende representar la membresía general de Ship Inc. Y el verde se pretende representar la conseja de Ship Foundation. Así que en esta organización futura, lo que notarás es que tenemos tres miembros profesionales, tenemos tres miembros de estudiantes. Y en el azul representan, como dije, la membresía general en general, profesionales y undergrads y estudiantes de gradua de nuestra actual membresía general de Ship Inc. Y el verde, estos son representantes designados que vienen de... Pueden venir de América corporativa, del gobierno, de la academia. Los únicos títulos en esta nueva organización que son garantizados son estos: NUR, NGR, vice-NUR, y luego... Así que estos son los únicos títulos que son garantizados. Los títulos adicionales, presidente o presidente, vicepresidente, secretario y tesoro, ya no serán decididos por la membresía general, serán decididos por el voto del consejo. Así que voy a dar un poco más de los detalles de eso en un segundo, pero quería señalar que tal vez hayan notado que los vicepresidentes regionales ya no están aquí, están aquí. Tuvimos que tomar un compromiso y decidir, ¿queremos que los vicepresidentes regionales sean tácticos o estratégicos? Y a través de los años, se han separado tratando de pensar estratégicamente en el consejo, pero ejecutar tácticamente en la región. Y solo muy pocas personas increíbles han sido capaces de hacer ambos excelentemente. No es fácil. Así que lo que decidimos fue entrar todo en lo que se convierte en táctico. Así que introdujimos el concepto estandarizado de comités regionales. Esta no es una nueva idea, se ha hecho en muchas regiones en el pasado, pero lo que decidimos fue que los RVPs ahora solo serían los presidentes de esos comités regionales. Tendrían a la RGR, la RSR y el representante regional junior como posiciones requeridas, y luego podrían agregar cualquier posición regional que se覺得 necesaria. Así que en esta organización futura, los vicepresidentes regionales no tendrían un voto directo en el consejo. Sin embargo, uno de estos profesionales seleccionados, el trabajo de este profesional sería el liaison entre los RVPs y el consejo. Así que los vicepresidentes regionales reportan directamente al consejo, y tienen un representante cuyo trabajo es asegurar que su voz es oída colectivamente y es proporcionado al consejo. Así que algunos de los cambios que estamos proponiendo. Primero de todo, no habría ningún impacto a los beneficios directos de un miembro o capítulo existente excepto por lo que votas. Y voy a mostrar eso en un momento. Así que este consejo total que mencioné serían seis seleccionados por la membresía general y nueve designados por el voto del consejo entero. El presidente, vicepresidente, secretario y tesoro son designados por el consejo entero. Uno de los miembros, ya sea el presidente o vicepresidente, siempre debe ser uno de esos miembros seleccionados por la membresía general. Así que siempre tendrás un representante de la membresía general de Ship hoy como ya sea el presidente o el vicepresidente. El NUR y el vice-NUR seguirán siendo seleccionados por los estudiantes y capítulos como son hoy. Y el representante de la graduada nacional y los tres profesionales serán seleccionados por la membresía general, similar a como son hoy, excepto que hoy votas por posiciones específicas para esos profesionales. Mañana solo estarías votando por que estén en el consejo. Las nueve posiciones designadas tienen áreas destinadas. Queremos tener a esos individuos como líderes de la academia, América corporativa o gobierno. Ese es el objetivo, pero no son un título de ningún tipo. Mencionamos que todos los siete vicepresidentes regionales ahora lideran sus comités regionales. Y la RSR y la RGR seguirán siendo seleccionados por la membresía general. La RJR estaría ahora en los reglamentos y seleccionada por el voto del comité regional. Los RVPs también seguirán siendo seleccionados por la membresía general como son hoy. Así que para votar... Hay muchas palabras aquí. Pero aquí está el estado actual en el medio, y aquí está el estado futuro. Lo que notarás es que los estudiantes y capítulos hoy electan todos estos posiciones. Y en el futuro, el único individuo que no serán seleccionados es... Espera, puedo hacer esto. Es el presidente... No tienen títulos, ¿verdad? Así que tenemos tres miembros profesionales que pueden elegir, y antes teníamos cuatro. Así que de nuevo, tenemos tres miembros profesionales, y estos títulos no son elegidos por nadie excepto por el consejo total. Así que notarás lo mismo para estudiantes de gradúa, hay un individuo menos. Y para los miembros de vida regular y profesional, hay un individuo menos porque hay una posición menos que la membresía pueda elegir. Así que en general, tus votos van a verse bastante similares. Tienen un individuo menos, pero todavía tienes que tomar muchas decisiones como miembro de Ship. Los beneficios de la nueva organización. Esta nueva organización nos dará la capacidad de atraer más líderes influyentes de temporada para impulsar estrategia e influencia en América corporativa, academia y política pública en nombre de Ship. Si permanecemos en una organización electa, es muy improbable que podamos preguntar, no sé, al CEO de General Motors a dirigir una elección contra alguien tan fuerte y obnoxious como yo. Porque haré cualquier cosa que pueda para ganar. No, pero quiero decir, ¿pueden imaginar eso? ¿Pueden imaginar querer que alguien muy poderoso e influyente venga y dirija una elección? Tienen que poner su reputación en riesgo, tienen que poner el tiempo y la energía en dirigir una campaña. Es simplemente infeasible. Esta nueva organización también nos permitirá la capacidad de sostener los niveles de influencia del consejo a través del proceso de asignación. Tendremos una alineación de marca mejor y una voz más fuerte como organización. Nos permitirá tener programas y procesos más estables y streamline con un personal que reporta a un consejo de directores. Tendremos una infraestructura de gestión más sólida que ahora está preparada para el crecimiento. Potencial crecimiento en scholarships, programas y patrocinadores, como ahora somos muy claros, una 501(c)(3). Así que me gustaría presentarte a las personas que hemos seleccionado como consejo inaugural. Y cuando te piden votar, te piden votar arriba o abajo en el paquete. No, en esta primera cambio, no tienes que elegir y elegir a cada individuo. Si hay algo aquí que está quemándose en tu cerebro, que crees que no va a funcionar, entonces sabes cuál es tu voto. Pero creemos que esto es mejor para la organización, y creemos que las personas que hemos elegido y verás son las personas correctas para liderar esta organización. ¿Qué pasa? Bien. ¿No pueden escucharme?
Pueden escucharte, pero no pueden ver el PowerPoint.
No pueden ver el PowerPoint. Bien. ¿Qué hago ahora? Bien, así que estamos tratando de arreglar el PowerPoint para aquellos de ti en línea. Pero este es el PowerPoint en el sitio web. Bien, así que si quieres ver el PowerPoint completo, puedes ir a ship.org/future. ship.org/future. Por favor, díganle 900 555. 1212. ¡Oh! ¿Vieron eso? Creo que solo vi otro universo. No propusimos un gran cambio aquí en Ship, nos sorprenden. Así que como estaba diciendo, creemos que hemos elegido a personas en las que puedes poner tu confianza que mantendrán esta organización creciendo para el futuro. Así que tal vez reconozcas algunos de estos individuos. Aquel que tiene la cabeza de arriba. Es el que está hablando. Y lo que quiero que miren es cuál ha sido su relación con Ship durante los años. Así que eso soy yo. Ustedes me conocen. Soy miembro de vida, y he sido parte de Ship durante mucho tiempo. Miguel Alamani en la sala. Miguel, ¿puedes levantar la mano? Así que Miguel sería uno de los miembros designados, y él es de... ¡Ah, me va a matar! Olvidé arreglar el... Es Proctor con un ER, no un OR. Proctor y Gamble. Y también es miembro de vida y actualmente sirve como presidente y CEO interno de Ship Foundation. Rod Garcia, ¿puedes levantar la mano a todos, por favor? Aquellos de ti en línea no vieron a Rod levantar la pared. Lo pone suave. Rod es el actual consejo de Ship Foundation, miembro del consejo, y es el fundador, presidente fundador de Ship Inc., y también miembro de vida. Otros miembros designados, Adalia Sanchez de IBM, también miembro de vida, miembro de la fundación larga, miembro del consejo de gestión y miembro del comité de gestión. Ernesto Felix, Ernie Felix, actualmente presidente del IPC. Y estoy comprometido a asegurarse de que será miembro de vida antes de llegar a esta conferencia nacional. También tenemos a Diana Gomez. Diana habló antes. Hablemos con todos. Diana también es miembro de vida y tiene una larga historia como una de nuestras antiguas presidencias de Ship. Otros miembros designados. Retirado ejecutivo aeroespacial, Albert Alfaro de Region 2, uno de los conducidores para crear la nueva capa profesional de Ship South Bay, también miembro de vida. Dr. Amir Makari. Algunos de ustedes lo conocen. Actualmente miembro de consejo de Ship Foundation y fuente larga de Ship, también miembro de vida. Sr. Rosendo Cruz de nuestro IPC. Anterior y actual representante patrocinador del IPC de ExxonMobil. Fueron siempre ahí cuando lo necesitamos. Y de nuevo, será miembro de vida por la conferencia, garantizo. Tal vez conoces a Juliana Portas. Juliana, ¿puedes levantar la mano? Así que Juliana es la primera persona que estoy cubriendo que representaría a aquellos que la membresía seleccionaría. Juliana fue seleccionada por todos ustedes a través del proceso electoral que usamos en Ship Inc. Claudia Goggin, ¿puedes levantar la mano a todos? Claudia es nuestra tesoro actual, y también fue recientemente elegida por los miembros para convertirse en nuestra tesoro. Nicolás Hernández, ¿puedes levantar la mano a todos? Es nuestra actual secretaria nacional, y ella fue recientemente también elegida por la membresía. Y todos estos individuos son miembros de vida. Tal vez reconozcas a algunos de estos amigos. Pedro Rodriguez, ¿puedes levantar la mano? Primer presidente de la universidad de gradúa nacional. Elio, Elio Murillo, ¿puedes levantar la mano? Primer vicepresidente de la universidad de gradúa nacional, y luego Douglas Oriana. Primer presidente de la universidad de gradúa nacional y también miembro de vida. Así que espero que puedas creer que estos individuos que han tenido una larga pasión por Ship continuarán representando tus necesidades en el futuro. Entiendo que requiere un poco de fe y un poco de confianza para votar en esto una vez, y luego solo continuarán siendo capaces de votar en seis personas en lugar de 14. Pero creo en estas personas, creo en estos individuos, y firmemente creo en la decisión que hemos tomado como organización. Así que necesitamos tu apoyo. Eso es más ligero de lo que se pretendía, pero en la parte inferior dice ship.org/future. Este es el sitio web donde podrás encontrar las cartas de mí, Miguel, las cartas de nuestro fundador, Rod Garcia, y también este PowerPoint y este web broadcast estará vinculado ahí también. Así que también podrás encontrar los reglamentos de la organización, la estructura y todo lo que fue aprobado por ambos consejos. was approved by both boards. Circumstantially, it was approved unanimously as a matter, because all it needs is the majority vote, but it was approved unanimously by both boards. We're going to need your vote to approve the inaugural board members and the new org bylaws and Articles of Incorporation all at once. So we will be updating this website, ship.org/future, as questions continue to come up. And the process, so I'm going to go over the process after we have some speakers here, but the process and the timeline, I'm going to cover it next. So I'd like to have Mr. Rod Garcia, SHIP Founder, please come up.
I've been around a long time, and you can tell by the white hairs I have. They don't all come from age, they come from dealing with a lot of conflict and consensus over the years. Starting SHIP was not an easy matter. You know, we dealt with a lot of personalities when we started. Certainly when I first started the group, I found four like-minded people that I brought in and convinced them to be on our first board. And the sailing was easy until we got the first change in board members, and then thereafter it was a little bit different, because you have a lot of different thoughts and minds and their opinions or whatever, and that's part of the process of conflict and consensus. So we're at a point here in SHIP now that there's a change, and like I said earlier, change is not always easy and is somewhat difficult. Everybody agrees with everything that's always been done. One of the things I always learned, I used to watch TV West Point series, and one of the things I learned from that series was that they always said, "A good leader must learn to follow." And I always kept that in the back of my mind. And I think that is important, because as you grow an organization like this, to accomplish that, you need to be able to follow at times. And when I was the first president of SHIP, you know, the first president, and I said I had a friendly board, I could pretty much do whatever I wanted because they all supported me, but nevertheless, I had a lot of input from them. And I was not a person that did not listen to the people, and I would come to consensus and thoughts. It was very important to get that feedback, because no one person really has all the great ideas, it takes a community. One of the things I did after two years of being the president, I thought it was important to allow others to lead, and I believe SHIP is established to create leaders, and I think over the years we've proven that, and we continue to do that, and we need to do that even more so now. So I took a step back, and I became, I believe, the Vice President on the next board after this two-year term. And I took that as a deliberate step, I could have continued to be president for a long, long time. But I then felt that if I didn't step back, I would not create new leaders and would not allow the association to develop commitment from those leaders. We needed leadership, we needed people to buy in. And that was also part of the process that we grew SHIP throughout the nation, because as we went to different areas, there was opposition, there was not necessarily, as we went into different areas, say, to San Francisco, the Bay Area, class was there, and you know, we asked them to become part of us, to merge with us, whatever. And it wasn't easy to get them to come on board, because they reestablished an organization, and they felt uncomfortable, because they've done a good job establishing that organization, and it's had similar pattern of, you know, the accomplishments and goals. But we had to give to be able to convince them to, you know, become part of us, and that process took consensus, again, conflict and consensus, getting them to, for us to give, so they can take leadership roles, and then they joined us, and they did take leadership roles. Same thing happened in New York, it took us a long, in New York, but the East Coast, it took a longer time in that area, because for one thing, we're going west coast to east coast, and you know, we had to travel over there and meet the different, by the way, one of the corporations, one leader that we used to talk to was Smith Corona. Speaking about change, they were the typewriters, you know? And so there was, you know, resistance there too, because here we're going into, you know, a bunch of Mexicans from LA were going to New York, and there was a lot of Fur Ricans over there. So one of the, you know, when we picked the name, the Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers, one of the things we did, we considered that, and that's one of the reasons we picked the word Hispanic, we're trying to, we really wanted to bring everybody together, and that's, we figured that word might be neutral. And it did turn out to be that, but at the same time, you know, people did look at us from the standpoint, hey, you represent Mexicans or whatever. In fact, MICE was that way, they looked at us like we were all, in fact, they thought we were all from South America, but we're really from LA, we're a bunch of East LA guys. But anyway, but again, we needed to give up leadership to allow that to happen, and that's what we did. We gave up leadership, and they came on board, and that made it happen, okay? And I could tell you the stories, you know, over the years we've done that. So I guess what I'm trying to tell you, that we need to consider this, this is an important time in SHIP. I remember when the one board came up with the idea of regionalization, that wasn't, you know, something I was, you know, that I created myself, it was something that other people came up with. A board came up with a good idea, you know, probably myself, I was either neutral or against it, because, you know, change is hard. And when they made that happen, I was fully supportive, because you have to support leaders, you know, you have to, and that's the step I took back when I became the Vice President after being two years as president. I wanted to be able to support, because it's only to be a leader, to be the president of an organization or whatever, without support. And so we, in those days, Latinos didn't necessarily support each other. So I had to be an example, to show that you support other people, sometimes with different ideas. And that's one of the things that I think has developed, made us strong, that, you know, we stick together. And it's important that we are a family, and we do, you know, we argue amongst ourselves, but eventually, you know, we get together and we make, accomplish our mission. So I just wanted to speak that I'm in favor of the merger, I did think about it, certainly, you know, I was pretty instrumental in starting the Society of Hispanic Professionals of the 501(c)(3) and the 501(c)(6) in '76. So I was familiar with all the laws, and I was very much involved in actually writing some of the, you know, the applications and running it through the government and everything else, so I'm very familiar with the process, and I understood why we established two organizations at a time. In retrospect, I believe that we should have only organized one, but at the time, the technology is this way, or the knowledge that we had didn't lend itself. And so I think this is the right time to accomplish this unified organization, for all the reasons that were stated earlier. I'm fully supportive, and I hope you are too.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to have, I'd like to have my clicker work. I'd like to have Naomi Hernandez, please come up.
Good evening. So as Diana mentioned earlier, in 2007, 2006 timeframe, there was another big decision upon us, and that was to change the national conference from January, February to the fall term. At the time of that decision, I was a student, and I remember being in a town hall just like this, in 2006, NTCC, and hearing that, and not understanding why we were making that decision. And quite honestly, I was thinking about how that affected me, and how it was going to cut into some of my fun time, because I was going to not be able to take a couple extra days off, since it was, it used to be near going to break. I wasn't thinking about the big picture, how it would affect the SHIP organization, and how it would benefit so many people, including myself, because companies had more jobs posted in the fall. You know, fast forward to today, we are faced with another decision upon us, and I believe that this is the right decision to make, because it will allow us to be more cost-efficient, it will streamline our processes. You know, current state, in order to move forward and to have decisions made, we have to go to two boards, which takes time, because we don't always necessarily meet on the same weekend or the same schedule. Additionally, I think a big aspect of that, it's that it will allow us to bring more influential board members, people that have influence in academia and corporate America. Also, I believe that this will allow the RVPs to be more tactical, have more focus on the regions, which will really benefit the regions. So I'm in support of this, and if you have any questions, you know, we will have plenty of time for that.
Thank you very much. Pedro Rodriguez, please come up.
So a few times ago, I was like you, Sira, I share, I wasn't understanding anything of what they were saying, you know? And it was very hard for me to understand. And how can I be in favor of something that I didn't understand? And I remember a quote from Abraham Lincoln, it says, "If I have eight hours to shut down a tree, I'll spend six sharpening my axe." So you need to prepare first in order to execute. So I took a step back and started thinking, why are they proposing this? Because as an undergrad, I have seen all the great changes that SHIP has done, and the community around me, all of the great things that I have done to the people that I work with in my chapter, the people I have been working with regionally, nationally, I have seen members come to me and say, "Thank you for presenting SHIP to me, because it's changed my life, it helped me get the exposure that I needed, it helped me get the confidence that I needed in order to speak up, to network, to improve myself as a person." And for me, SHIP was good. What's the problem? And SHIP doesn't lack innovation, SHIP doesn't lack passionate leaders that are willing to sweat out for improving this organization. But, but there's a but. There's the, we have been analyzing numbers, when I received the transition, after speaking to people, I have seen that SHIP has been flat over a long hour, some period of this time. We have been improving, taking into consideration the big amount of increment of the Hispanic community in this country. So we're really good, yeah, we are, but we can be much better. So what is stopping us? What are the things? We're doing a lot of innovating initiatives, a lot of great ideas, and they're successful one year, and then they stop being successful? So where's the problem? What is stopping us to keep improving? What is that problem? And I, after analyzing that, I realized that it's the structure, the structure by itself was the problem of the higher up. And this new idea, new structure, is going to give us what it takes to bring to these new initiatives that we want to implement to SHIP to keep growing. Because I want a SHIP that is not like the one that is today, I want a SHIP for my kids that is better than the one that is today, I want a SHIP that creates the next US president that is Hispanic. I want a SHIP that creates the CEO and CTO, CIO of these big companies. So after all this thinking and all this process of internalizing, I realized that as an undergrad, even though I didn't have all the information I had to say, all the information I lost, to say, hey, this is, we are doing the right thing according to a law, or according to this, X or Y, I support this merger, I support this initiative, because we need big changes like this in order to keep improving.
Welcome up, our Region 2 Vice President, Ms. Michael.
I would scream "Whose House?", but I don't want to blow the ears of the people online. But Whose House?
Whose House!
Yeah, thanks. So I'm going to be a little bit old school and, you know, read off my notes. But really, I just wanted to say, I can't echo enough the sentiments that have already been shared by my colleagues, you know, by Diana, Naomi, Pedro, and Barry. I fully support the merger of this organization to create one more streamlined, streamlined efficient organization. And in addition to that, I support the new structure, I fully support the new structure, because I think that's the way that a lot of nonprofits are headed, and, you know, we're at that time, that point in our lives. And as Miguel Alamani said earlier today, you know, we're middle-aged, and it's time to move forward to the next chapter, 40 years. But change is not always easy, and, you know, it's very hard for us as individuals a lot of times to accept change, so as organizations, it's probably a lot more difficult. But, you know, it's a lot more easier a lot of times to stick to status quo, because it's a lot more comfortable. But if change didn't exist, where would we be today? Right? 20 years ago, many of us didn't have an email address, and today we can't even live without email. We've got on our phones now. Just 10 years ago, Facebook didn't exist, and now millions of us use it to communicate. So, you know, what do we do now? Do we choose to change with the times, or do we, you know, fight change and let others pass us by? And I really don't think that SHIP is that organization. So my intention is not to be political, but I did read, come across this quote by Bill Clinton, and I'd like to share it, because I think it's relevant to SHIP at this point in time. And he said, quote, "The price of doing the same old thing is far higher than the price of change." So, you know, we stand to lose a lot if we stay stagnant, and I think that, you know, my colleague Magda made a reference to Facebook, you know, when social media first started, there was all kinds of social media things going on, and Facebook continuously, you know, reinvented themselves. And, you know, we're not like the ones, the other social media types of businesses that are going to disappear, we're here for the long haul. So with that, I encourage all of you to support this measure that both boards have approved.
Okay, so the timeline that we're proposing is, we're having this town hall with some Q&amp;A, we have another one on August 14th. On August 18th, the ballots will go out. So for those of you online, or those of you that are watching this in the future, you need to be a paid member before the ballots go out. So in order to vote in this, our bylaws require that you're a paid and current member. So as of August 18th, ballots will go out, ballots will close on September 12th. This gives you plenty of time to continue to ask questions of your regional representatives of your current board of directors. On September 15th, the results will be determined, they'll be communicated to our existing organization, and if they are in favor, they will be submitted to the Attorney General with all of the information we've already submitted for preapproval. On October 1st, we plan to start the new organization. Okay, so there's one question that, you know, I think that it's the most common question we're going to get, and you may have noticed during this presentation, I used the word "selected" versus "elected," right? And so I want to explain this very clearly. What happens in the future versus today? In the future, the general membership cannot directly send someone to the board clearly, right? It's not guaranteed that if they vote on these three members, they're guaranteed to be on the board. But what they would do is they would select, through their election process, who they want those members to be. And it's up to our faith and the individuals that we appointed to this board to make the decision to allow those people, to appoint those people to the new board. So it is a change. There is a chance that we all decide on somebody, and they come to the board, and the board, something happens, right? And the board says, oh, wait a minute, this individual is not the best person for the organization. Now, one of those professional representatives no longer is chosen and not appointed, and that creates a vacancy. But you remember in the bylaws that we described, either the Chair or the Vice Chair at all times must be an individual from the membership ranks, and they have to be a professional. So you can't do this too often, because you limit the amount of people that you can actually have on your board. You can only ex-nay one person before you're down to only two options. We have to have faith and confidence in the individuals that we appoint, that they will do the right thing. And we chose to go this route, because logistically, the only way we could get this done in a timely manner was to merge under the existing organization, the 501(c)(3), which is a self-perpetuating appointed. which is a self-perpetuating appointed board. So legally, this is a fully appointed board. The way we written the bylaws is that individuals will be selected by the general membership, and this board is all but compelled to appoint those people to the board. So this was a very difficult decision, required a lot of debate. But I, I have to remind you that this, along with all of the other controversial decisions we made in these bylaws, was voted on and approved unanimously by both boards. We believe it's the right decision. So I'd like to answer other questions from, from the, first the audience, and then we'll take turns and go online. So questions from the audience? We have a microphone in the middle here.
All right. Fred Reyes, Ventura County Chapter. I had a question regarding the 501(c)(3). I think it's a good idea to do this merger. It seems more efficient. But I want to find out the 501(c)(3) status going down to the chapter. Because if we had that status, it's easier for us to get commitments from corporate sponsors.
Right, so all of the chapters are currently subsidiaries of the 501(c)(6). And unless they incorporated themselves and established the 501(c)(3) status, they are not, right? So in the future, they would not automatically be 501(c)(3)'s. However, they would be subsidiaries of the new organization, which is a 501(c)(3), which would create the opportunity, it's not guaranteed, we have to create the policies and procedures to support it, but it would create the opportunity to allow funding to go through the foundation to the chapter. We have that opportunity today. It's been very difficult for us to do because those chapters are subsidiaries of the c6. So donations have to come to the c3, go to the c6, and then get distributed down. So this creates the opportunity for us to write those policies and procedures, which we have to do to enable that to happen more efficiently.
So that, that's still, that's the plan?
Yes, we haven't written the new policies and procedures. We'd like to get approval from the membership before we get going down that path.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, good question. Is there a question online? Silvana? Sorry, Manny, and then we'll go to you. Silvana needs a microphone, actually. Sorry.
So we have a question from Nonar Abeyza. He says, "The merger makes sense to combine the two organizations. Can you explain the process to ensure that there is a regular turnover in this new board structure? There should be a lifetime limit that someone can serve. This ensures new ideas and leadership."
Right, so if, if you read the bylaws, and I encourage you all to sit down for a few hours and read the bylaws. The, we did set term limits on all board positions, whether they come from the general membership or they come, or they're appointed. They're two-year terms. They are alternating among the board, and no individual can serve more than three consecutive two-year terms. They would have to step off for a year. We didn't put a lifetime limit, you know, but we believe that this creates that, that rotation that, you know, it allows us to refresh and add new members at a regular rate. Question from the audience. Manny Hernandez?
Yeah, this is Manny Hernandez, past national president. So I have two questions, but that's all right.
Okay.
First question is, there is the procedure to describe how an elected person may not be allowed to join the board. But you didn't describe what the procedure would be for determining if that person would be allowed to sit around. Has that been developed yet?
So no, the, the bylaws only indicate that the, the individual that is chosen by the general membership is presented to the board, and the board has to vote with the majority to put that person in place. The additional procedural item that is in the bylaws is in order for you to remove an individual, any individual from the selected area, you need a supermajority, which means you need more than just the appointed members to approve it. You also need several of the selected members from the general membership to approve that as well. So we, we tried to add some safeguards so that no one type of board member could be overwhelmed by the other one. So the, so to answer your question, how do we make that decision whether an individual should be, continue to serve on the board or not, or should be accepted onto the board? No, there isn't that. But today, there isn't, there also isn't a procedure that outlines all the reasons that someone can be removed. So, so it's an opportunity, we could add that to a future policy procedure, but right now, we haven't developed those policies and procedures yet.
Well, it's just a danger of you look like me, you are not, or you think like me, you are not, you know? You understand, so?
So today, we have that danger, right? Somebody could be elected to the board, and if the board doesn't like them, they can take them out. And that's happened in the past. That danger doesn't go away.
But in the current bylaws, at least I get a chance to perform or not versus not being allowed to even attempt to perform.
They could perform for a day, and then the board could say, you're gone. So no, I, I don't think there's a major difference between the two situations. The only difference is that they don't get that day or a week or a month if the board decides the felony count on this individual prevents them from serving on the board or whatever reason.
A felony count or that they may be from a certain ethnic group or geographical location.
Again, I have to point out that that situation exists today. And, you know, it, it could happen after they've been appointed, and it could happen before they've been appointed. The membership could decide, I don't like someone from that ethnicity, and not vote for them, even if they're the only member. That could happen today.
So the second question is that the current bylaws say that members who are, I mean, yeah, members who are members as of February 15th can vote. But you stated August 18th. What's the?
So the February 15th is for, it's outlined to be for the election of new members. This is a change to the organization. If you look at the last article in the bylaws, it doesn't require a date. So what we've done is we set a date that says before the voting starts. So this is not the situation of February 15th. February 15th is for voting new members to the Board of Directors. This is for a change in the organization.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, great questions. Question from online space. Get her a stool. I didn't say that.
Okay. So we have quite a few concerns from the Ship New Jersey professional who has posted a few questions or statements. First one says, "Per new bylaws, the member votes are just a recommendation, non-binding. Members do not have a vote. The members have no vote or voice. This leads to a good old boy network. If you are not my friend or agree with me, you're out. If they don't like your accent, tie, colors, you're out. This is not a democracy. An organization does not have stakeholders voting members. That drives ship is dangerous as these leaders have no accountability. And why did this start earlier than 10:15 as per national email or 7:15?"
Why did this not start? Why did this start? No, the meetings start earlier than 10:15. So the problem with slippery slopes is they're very slippery. These are all good points, and I, I addressed the first one because it is, it is the, the most important question. It was the hardest for us to agree upon unanimously as a board that the selection process, in order for us to make this happen this year, before we bring in a new CEO, before we bring in the future leader of our organization, we need to make this happen now. We could, we could have said, all right, let's start a new organization and take on the nine to 15-month process of submitting new bylaws that is a hybrid of elected and appointed. But we didn't think that this organization should wait that long to make that change. And we didn't want to take a CEO through the experience of two boards and a management committee and a lot of reporting and a lot of inefficient processes. We wanted to take care of this now so that we can attract top talent, someone who is looking forward to working for one organization, one board. So to answer that question again on selected versus elected, absolutely, the members select their representatives. Now, do you have confidence that the founder of SHIP and the current president of SHIP is going to listen to the voice of the members? Is really what the question is. Am I going to take the three people, the three professionals and three students that you select and say, nope, bad idea. We're not going to appoint any of them? It all comes down to an issue of trust. Now, the trust is happening upfront versus after the fact. Today, it happens after the fact. You trust that the Board of Directors will take those elected people and allow them to serve their full term. However, today, we could say, we don't like that person because of the color of their tie, because we don't like people from New Jersey. It could be anything. And we could say, we're taking them off the Board of Directors. So tomorrow, that could still happen. Tomorrow, it can happen earlier. I'm here to tell you that it's not going to happen, that I have full confidence in the current board members of the SHIP Foundation, the two additional individuals that we've added to this board, and those members that you today have elected. I have confidence that they will continue to make the right decision and select people and appoint people that will also continue to make that right decision. I'd like to hear another question from the audience. Miguel? Somebody get that mic a stool.
I just, I just want to add a clarification. I think you've said this, but I, I'm not sure that it's just related. It feels to me there is a concern that one kind of board member will gang up with the other kind of board member. I don't think that's a real concern because when you're in a board, you're all board members. And our responsibility in a board is to the board, to get the decisions that are the best for the decision. But just in case, because sometimes bad apples get in the apples, it happens. We have push safeguards where that can't happen. The only way that the elected board members can vote out of the board, whether they have different accents or different ties, the only way it can happen is if the elected members agree. It can't be that the appointed member is the one in the chart, the ones in green put other ones in blue. The only way that ones in green can put other ones in blue is if the ones in blue agree. It's called supermajority. For every other decision, the board will decide with a simple majority, except for decisions that have to do on the blue members. The blue members will require that the blue members vote in favor. So if there is an elected member and the board decides that they don't want to appoint him because they're probably related to Barry or someone crazy, think like that. Those selected members on the board have to agree. So it is a safeguard. So I don't, I, I sense that on this list, I don't understand it with that, with that safeguard. So.
Thank you. Good comment. So another question or a series of comments from online.
A question from Ship Member Isus Manego. What will be the name of this new organization? And is there a plan in place to make the world, our sponsors in particular, aware of this change and what it means to them?
Okay, good, good questions. So the future name of the organization? Is SHIP. Yep, really went for it there. We, you know, we, we talked a little bit about, should we take this opportunity to rename the organization? And we decided, no. We decided, you know, we're proposing enough change here. It would be a shame if the members liked everything or agreed with everything except for the name we chose. So for now, we've decided not to change the name of the organization. And then the second question was, what is the process for informing the stakeholders and the world? Right, so we have to get a, we have to get a vote by our members. They have to agree. Once that has been done, we, we will be using press releases. We'll be, we'll be using our new partnership with Telamundo to announce this to the world. We will be telling the new, all of our stakeholders about this new, more powerful, more poised-for-growth organization that we believe will take us to the future. So press releases, emails with stakeholders. We've already informed our key sponsors, our IPC, and we will continue down that path. Additionally, we plan to, we've already started the search process for a new CEO. And we plan to have this board in place and the new CEO in place by our conference in Detroit in the fall so that you can, you can see the new board and the new CEO in action all in the same place. Thank you. Okay, we only have this till what time? Hi, Silvana. Come on up. I have 22 minutes? So 22 is just enough for Silvana? Okay.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Antalya Riza. I'm part of the Greater Philadelphia Chapter, and I'm a professional track chair. And one of the challenges that I'm having right now is that I definitely trust the decision made, but this seems to be a 30,000-feet view. And I would like you guys to perhaps break it down for the membership a little bit further. And what I mean by that is, you say you're going to have a strategy made by the elected or, I'm sorry, appointed board, and then you're going to have tactical done by the RVPs at the other positions that will follow the RVPs. But could you elaborate a little bit on the initiatives that these two entities of our leadership are going to be working on? And, you know, you mentioned that our population has grown a lot, but our membership is not. How is this going to take us to have more than 10,000 members?
Okay, excellent question. So stay there because I'm going to need to go back. There's like, there's like four of them. Okay, so I'll start with the last one because that's all I can remember. So. The question is, how is this new organization going to allow us to grow? And, and so, you know, nothing is guaranteed, right? There's, there's no guarantees here, but all we can do right here is set the structure that we believe will allow us to grow, right? So there's always a chance that we set the new structure and everyone walks away. I don't think that's going to happen because these people you've already elected and have already been appointed and have a long passion for SHIP. However, in, in order to grow, we have to, we have to think strategically. We have to get rid of the mess that we have today. And, and part of that mess is our financial controls are complicated. It's very difficult to complete an audit. By not having clear audited financials, it's more difficult to get grants. So if we can clean up our finances and we can maintain that, that clean slate, it's a lot easier for us to go after all the grants that we used to get before the level of scrutiny went up. And so that's one way we get more money into our organization. It allows us to support our existing programs and to grow more programs. Additionally, currently, if we want to make a decision between developing a program from SHIP Foundation and executing it on SHIP Inc., we have to get two boards to agree and not fight. And then for them to come with a proposal together, it costs a lot of time and money to make that happen. And what this will allow us to do is to make that decision quicker, to make it easier, and for us to come up with one decision one time and execute it. So this is just some of the reasons, you know, the, the possibilities here, I think, are endless. It's, it's like, it's like we've been living with a lot of clutter. If we can get this clutter out of the way, what, what's possible? I'm only listening with, what's immediately obvious to me. But, you know, can we take a strong look at our professional program and go after the 30,000, 40,000 professionals that are professionals today because of SHIP? Absolutely, we can. Can we do it today? Yes. Is it hard? Yes, very hard. Can we develop those programs on the foundation side and execute them on the shipping side? Yeah, also hard. So this makes it easier, in my opinion, to do that. Give me three of your other questions.
I would like examples of what are the decisions that the RVPs are going to be in charge of now.
Excellent question. Yes, certainly. So one of the major decisions we made here was that regional vice presidents today, their money is in this bucket, and it's a messy bucket. Then we're trying to pay off debt and get into a position of growth. And we've had to make difficult decisions as a staff and as an organization in the past. And sometimes it affects regional budgets. So the decision we made was to isolate regional funds, to make them restricted so that in times of difficult cash flow, the RVPs no longer have the worry of, is that, is that money going to be taken away, right? They have much more autonomy to their budgets, and they have full control over executing their regional programs and their RDCs based on the cash flow that comes in. They can maintain a balance now and carry it from year to year. They can control their strategy in a much more tactical, much more focused way. So again, this is infrastructure, right? And so we would need to work with them to develop the policies and the procedures that they believe should be standardized. And also, they need to develop what they think needs to be customized within their region. But it's, it's up to us to take the next steps after the board votes on this. votes on this, to take on those difficult tasks. Okay, what, you have another one? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Natalia. You have another question online?
Three professional positions will be selected. Regional positions will no longer be used?
So that's, okay, so three positions would be selected, regional positions would not. Oh, no, no. So the regional vice president still exists, okay? And they are still elected by the direct election. Making up words. Direct election of the members. So absolutely, the regional positions still exist. All of the regional committees led by each regional vice president, they connect with the liaison, one of the three appointed professionals that had been selected by the general membership. And so there is that connection still as well. Dr. Gravey, welcome.
Thank you. So I think that I'm not a membership that's disengaged from the organization, on the contrary. And I consider myself somebody that's constantly in connection with the staff and participating in all kinds of activities, more generally in the graduate program in a very significant way. And this is actually the first time I've heard of this. So I'm a little bit shocked that I have not heard of this at all, particularly because of my significant involvement with the organization. So this has caught me by surprise. And I'm not for or against it yet, because I don't really understand it yet. I plan to read the bylaws that you all developed, however long it takes me. But I think the timeline that you proposed, at least for me, is a little bit rushed. I think like many people in this room have a lot of responsibilities. And I don't think I can do this process the, what it deserves for me to make a decision by the days that you are proposing. I don't necessarily think that we must have everything in place by October 1. I think significant changes require thoughtful discussion. And I would like to be a part of that process, and I haven't. And so I really would like to encourage us to consider taking it a little bit slower, having more discussion among the members, and thinking this through more carefully. I know, just from what I have heard today, that there are probably a few things that I would like to propose be modified. Not many, but again, I need to read the document more carefully. And so I wish I had given some of these suggestions earlier. And so now, the only thing I can say is, I'd like more time to read this very carefully and to make decisions on this and to give my thoughtful opinion on it. And I don't think it can be done on that timeline that you have presented here.
Okay, I think that's a great comment. So I'd like to say, first of all, we can adjust the timeline a little bit. We can add some additional time for those members that would like more time. Absolutely, we can push it out, but the desire is not to push it out to affect the hiring of a new CEO. I would like the CEO to come into a new organization. Additionally, there are so many passionate, dedicated members of the organization that, you know, we had to decide, should we bring them in? Should we not bring them in? What's the right decision? And it was very difficult. So not everyone got input. However, each of you has a representative currently on the SHIP Inc. board. And those representatives that you elected to represent your interests have made these decisions with you in mind. So the intent of this was to use this representative government that we have here to make the best possible decision. I believe, I believe we have made the best possible decisions based on the needs of our organization and some very difficult compromises that we made with the current stakeholders that had been elected and appointed in each organization. Right. So in order to make sure legally that we are doing the right thing, we submitted the paperwork prior to vote to the Attorney General to make sure that everything was on the up and up. We got feedback that everything is on the up and up, and they had one question that we needed to answer about deferred revenue. We submitted that response. And I'm expecting for that response to be positive and to go ahead. And I'd stake my career, my current position on that, that this will be approved by the Attorney General prior to. And then again, it has to be approved after the election, after the election goes through. How much time do I have? 10 minutes. Excellent.
Emmanuel Darwin, I'm president of the LA chapter. Just one quick comment while I ask my questions. Two of the links are broken on the website, including the letter to the Attorney General, so I couldn't access that little bit ago. I want to take care of that.
Okay.
One of the questions, back to earlier, from online, they asked, "What was the name of the organization?" And you said SHIP. If I am not mistaken, the name of the 501(c)(6) is the Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers Incorporated. And the name of the 501(c)(3) is currently SHIP Foundation. So which one is it going to be?
SHIP without Inc. or Foundation, just SHIP. Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers. Stop. Yeah. And Andrew's working on fixing those links for you right now.
Now, to my question. Right now, I believe most, most, if not all of the professional chapters, board of directors are modeled after the SHIP National Board of Directors. How is this discharge going to affect those professional chapters that went out?
Yeah, so currently, we don't have any reason to change the policies on how boards are structured and how they're recommended to run. We believe that that model is working for the most part and that the standardized minimum format that's proposed and the current policy should continue to work. So I don't see any change to that.
Hi, my name is Michael Perez, incoming president for Cal State Northridge. I came up more so for curiosity. A lot of what's going on, I'm really unaware of, being an undergrad. But my question was more so for the controversy that I guess is stirring up. Yes, the doctor that just spoke. And this goes back to the case study that I'm working on, which is transparency. Her concern seems to be about that. And it's just, my question is, has there ever been an instance that someone has been removed because their accent, ethnicity, or such?
Not to my knowledge. There has never been an individual removed for improper reasons. But to answer your comment, I think, which is essentially, why wasn't I a part of this decision or other people? Two reasons. One is that we have a representative government that we voted in to make decisions on your behalf. There's many, many decisions that are made by the board of directors without, without voice of the individual members, but through representation. It's very difficult to gather a lot of feedback. So what we did here was we created what we believe is the best possible solution. And now it's up to the members to go up or down on it. So it's difficult. And what's the right number? Who's the right individuals? Dr. Gravey is not the only individual that would be a great addition to the conversation. We, you know, we made the decision we made to include the people we included. I think we made the best decision possible at the time. So, you know, I'm going to stand by that.
And I guess I have another question now. Was it even considered?
Was what even considered?
Having other individuals involved?
Yeah, other, there were other individuals involved than, other than the people appointed, right? Yes, there were, there were plenty of other individuals involved, but who was chosen to be along this process was, was very difficult. And, you know, we, we made the decisions, you know, based on the entire group.
Thank you.
What is the estimated cost of the merger and source of funding? And will any of these positions be paid or volunteered?
First of all, no paid positions. That would be wonderful, but no. No, no paid positions. The cost of the merger is essentially the cost of the legal fees and the cost of the consultant who helped guide us along this process. So I'm going to estimate $35,000, probably somewhere around there for the consultant and legal fees. And the cost to execute the merger is included in that for the legal fees. In addition, in order to have these meetings, we had to fly people around to meet face-to-face so that we could argue like proper adults. And so there was some cost incurred for that. The two meetings combined totaled about $29,000. That cost was covered by a donation from one of our sponsoring companies to help us reorganize into a more efficient organization.
When was this plan thought up? And what brought, what brought about this idea? At what point in your presidency did you feel like the change was necessary?
Wow, I think it was my idea. This, Diana, when was this thought up? I'm going to bring, oh, there's a mic right there, Diana.
And I can reach this one. Well, you know, in all honesty, this whole idea about being one organization, a 501(c)(3) started before I was president, so almost however many years that has been. So more than 10 years, the idea was conceiving. So I mentioned that the foundation itself, we had the organization that started, but the original foundation was dissolved and the new foundation was created, which maybe some of you remember, '18. At that time, which was again before, before I was president, we had thought about just becoming one organization. And when you start talking to a lot of lawyers, things get really scary really fast. And so we left the organizations moving forward in parallel. And in June of 2012, 13, June of 2013, when the two boards came together and we talked a lot about how, why things were so difficult in the whole decision-making process. And so it started then, that's when the conversation started. And, but it took a lot of research and a lot of time, and things started to move, to progress a lot faster these past couple of six months. So it wasn't just on the whim that Barry said, "Oh, let's merge," because we want to slap them down quickly. Okay, but, anyway. But so it is, it is a long process. And so the idea, you know, was back in June of 2013 that the boards, the management committee at the time, which consisted of the two board members of the boards, decided, hey, you know what? We really need to make this, make this decision and move forward, even though this had started a long time ago. So we're just kind of maybe moving things now. And but it has been coming, this whole thing always continues to come up.
Let's get the microphone to Peter.
So hi, I'm Peter Rios, a lifetime member. So I'm curious as to, the SHIP Foundation office is located in DC. And the purpose of moving it there was to kind of gain some political momentum. I'm curious how this merger will affect our presence in DC and the office being there?
So somewhat unrelated, the property that we purchased in DC, we recently sold both buildings. However, the foundation moved into a rental, a rental office a couple blocks away. We still have, definitely have the need to have a presence in DC. Currently, we haven't made any decisions to move the organization there. But having a single organization and a single staff creates the need to bring things together. So there's an opportunity in the future that we may do that. But it is up to the new board of directors to make that decision. I got one more minute. That's one more question.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Benavides, Vice President of SHIP Austin. Kind of interesting that you asked that question. Can I kind of segue this into my question? As to transforming into 501(c)(3), maybe I'm not aware of where, what our current stance and approach has been. But I think as far as moving the organization forward, I think SHIP needs to have a more visible impact in public policy around STEM. So I'm just curious as to becoming a 501(c)(3), how that impacts our ability to do so?
So I would say it doesn't negatively impact our ability to have influence in government. If you look at other organizations that are engineering organizations, like ASCE, like Society of Women Engineers, like the AES organization, which I forget their acronym, they have, they have Days on the Hill. They have meetings with congressmen. And what they call them are educational sessions, where they're educating them on the necessity for their organization. It's not lobbying. It is educating those officials. And because of the influence that they've been able to have, they have been able to make some big policy changes. And you are seeing, continuing to hear and see more and more buzz around STEM and minorities in STEM. So much so that in recent decisions where Congress asked for organizations to testify about the need for Hispanics in STEM, they asked NCLR and GMIS. SHIP was not asked, because we haven't been organized enough to maintain a presence on the Hill. And we believe with this new organization and having right in our, in our policies that we have a target to appoint someone that has that influence, that we'll be in a better position to make that happen. Okay, that is all the time we have questions for. I do want to say that this, again, this was a very difficult decision that required a lot of compromise. It required a lot of arguing and discussing, and I continue to believe this is the best possible decision we could make. And I'm very proud of the representatives from both boards for all the hard work and time they put into it. Thank you for listening to us tonight. I hope to continue this conversation, and I look forward to your vote in a few weeks. Silvana, tell me what to do. Can I just close windows?